Good afternoon from Hawkins Hall. Thank you for joining me on this one-hour virtual town hall meeting geared for students and their parents. It's an honor to be your president and to meet with you this afternoon. I know this is an unsettling time for you. I understand your stress and uncertainty. We are mindful of that, and we are doing and will do all we can to support you. I want to confirm and assure you of our commitment to your safety and achievement of your educational goals. This is my number-one priority. This is the priority of our campus. So before we begin this afternoon, let me give you an update as to where we are. The spring semester will continue using remote distance learning, in-place learning, beginning on Monday, March 23rd. Your faculty and staff are working hard to prepare and create tools to enable your education to continue. The college is open, but it is very different. And those differences continue to unfold as new limitations are put into place. I want to alert you that overnight, we learned that Clinton County Health Department reported its first confirmed case of COVID-19 in the region. The individual has no specific connection to our campus community, but this underscores the critical importance all of us have in practicing social distancing and the prevention tips that have been shared through our campus. I want to say this is about flattening the curve of infection and minimizing person-to-person transmission of the virus. This requires each of our active participation. Last week, we encouraged students to not return to campus. Given the changes that have occurred over the past few days and even the past 24 hours, with Governor Cuomo's announcement that all nonessential college employees must stay home, I want to emphasize this point about returning to campus again. At this time, I urge you not to return to campus after spring break until further notice. I understand some of you have special circumstances. International students, students where other safe living and dining arrangements cannot be made, or those with limited or no access to technology. These students may return to campus residence facilities. I also want to inform you that select on-campus services will continue, but their hours continue to be scaled back. We are maintaining limitations on gathering sizes consistent with social distancing and public health guidelines. Fees may become even more restrictive and more limiting over time. The gym is now closed, and all campus events have been canceled. The library will have limited hours beginning today. Based on the governor's proclamation, all food service will likely need to shift to takeout boxed meals. Please know that we are operating with a limited on-campus staff. The public school districts around Plattsburgh have also closed for at least the next five weeks. All this puts additional stress on our faculty and staff. It means your calls and emails may take a little bit longer to respond to. Please be patient. But based on my interaction with hundreds and hundreds of you since arriving in January, I know you will extend your goodwill to our faculty and staff. So I thank you in advance for that. So with that, I want to turn to today's town hall and address your questions, which you can type in. I will do my best to answer them or get answers from others in campus leadership before the end of this one-hour session. Campus leaders, including your deans, vice presidents, will assist me in answering your questions in real time. We will also post the video of today's session on the plattsburgh.edu coronavirus page, which is found at the top of the campus's homepage. I wanted for a moment to talk about questions you may have about refunds or credits for resident housing, dining, and fees. Yesterday afternoon, I sent a message to all students about this. At this point in time, we continue to work with SUNY and Albany to determine when and how these credits or refunds will be applied to your student account. If there are any questions we can't answer here today, we will do our level best to include answers in future communications or on the campus webpage dedicated as a single source of information. So with that, I'm going to begin to address your questions. And I'm going to do this in real time. So what I'll do is I will read the question, and I will then provide an answer, or if I need assistance, or to put this into a position of a virtual parking lot to get assistance from another person on campus, that's how the event will move forward. So I see the very first question is, "Has a determination been made about how students with labs required will be able to complete?" At this point in time, faculty and instructors who are involved with hands-on laboratories are creating alternate ways in which to deliver this information to you. So you will hear from your instructor by Monday as to how the laboratory sessions will be handled to ensure your continued success in the course. The question is, "The next question is, will juniors be receiving refunds on housing and meal plans?" And this question came in just before I gave the information that at the current time, we are working with SUNY and Albany to determine how we'll process refunds for dining, for residence halls, and fees based on the remainder of the semester. So that's a stay tuned for additional information answer. Next question is, "Will graduation date of May 16th be changed or postponed?" Excellent question, one that I've been thinking about as well. At this time, the CDC has recommended no gatherings of greater than 50 people for the next eight weeks. That falls almost identically on the date of our scheduled graduation here in Plattsburgh. So at this point in time, I'm going to say that a determination has not yet been made. But like you, I am concerned that we may have to cancel this event. Question that's just come in as to what is open and what will not be open. On the campus right now, the library is open, but it has limited hours. The gym is closed, and many of our events that were scheduled have been postponed. In the community, in correspondence and in recognition of the governor's proclamation, many restaurants and other establishments have closed down or also are offering limited access. So there has been a general closing of businesses here in the community in response to the coronavirus. Good question. "I left my stuff in my room or my dorm. Can I get my stuff in May?" I'm going to put that one into our virtual parking lot for a moment and wait for a response back from Residence Life. I understand that it could be inconvenient to be able to travel to campus right now, and you may not want to at this point in time. So let me wait for an answer for that question with respect to the dorms. So the next question is, "What are the health center's capabilities in handling COVID-compromised students?" And I'm going to wait for a moment for our director of the health center, Dr. Kathleen Camilla, to respond to that particular question, so I don't give you incorrect information. The next question is, "Will studio classes for fine arts majors continue?" At this point in time, no face-to-face classes will continue on campus. However, if students are present in the community, there will be access, as we know today, to studio space to be able to continue your research or your projects that you have underway. But this will not be part of a formal face-to-face class or a formal class time. Next question. "Hello, thank you for doing this. Due to out-of-town flights, et cetera, will graduation be held or canceled?" I'll just refer you to just rewind the video about two minutes, and you'll get the answer to that question. But thanks again for bringing it up. Question now. "Hi, Dr. Niede. I have a few questions regarding work-study as I work on campus." And another question as to what will happen to... And that's where it ends. So I know the questions are concerning work-study. I'm going to allow our HR experts here to provide any answers with respect to that, and certainly financial aid will weigh in as well in terms of the impact that the changes here on campus will have on work-study. So the next question is, "If we plan to return to campus but are no longer allowed to, will we be allowed to pick up the rest of our belongings and will we still be refunded?" So the short answer to the refund question is, if you have left the campus and you're in the residence halls, there will be information sent to you with respect to refunds or credits for the unused portion of your residence hall, your meal plans, and certain fees. I don't have complete details on that. As I mentioned in the very first moments we joined together, that's details that I'm still waiting to hear from the main office of SUNY in Albany. I want to return to a question that came in a few moments ago about the campus housing. And what I've been told with respect to questions you may have about being able to return, to gather your belongings, and then go home, campus housing and community living will be communicating with students about this very soon. There's a question here, "Credit for online classes." And I'm going to make the assumption that's a question that may be around, is there going to be a refund because classes have gone to online? And at this time, there will be no tuition refunds because classes are continuing, and the faculty that you work with will be continuing to deliver the course material to you. We're just using the online modality. It says, "Another question just came in about art students who require studio time." I can just quickly refresh back to the beginning. If they're still available, studio spaces at this time are open for students to have access to. It says, "Will Student Association events be suspended or postponed until next semester?" The answer that I've received on this is that the events that were scheduled for this semester have been either suspended or postponed. I want to emphasize that it's very important for all of us to practice social distancing and take other precautions. If a student or a campus community member is concerned about COVID-19, they should certainly call the Student Health Center or their medical provider first. So it says, "Is there a chance that dining halls will be closed if we are staying here on campus?" At the moment, in listening to the governor's decision concerning restaurants, it appears that our dining halls would fall into the category of takeout-only. And so under those constraints, at this point in time, I see they're having the ability and the capacity to continue to create and provide meals for students on a takeout basis. The next question is, "Is there a mandatory isolation period for people who are leaving and coming back?" And the answer to that is, unless you've been... I'll start back. We're following the Health Department and the CDC guidelines. If you've not been exposed to someone who is testing positive for COVID-19, right now, the recommendation is that there's not any, basically, isolation. However, if you've recently traveled to a Level 2 or a Level 3 country, or have been in contact with individuals, or I'll back that up, basically have traveled to Level 2 and Level 3 countries, then there would be a necessity for isolation. So the next question I wanted to go back to is work-study students. Says that for work-study students, at this point in time, work-study students and student employees are considered nonessential by the governor's mandate. You should contact your supervisor before planning to report for work, and more information will be provided in the coming days from your supervisor. And one other question I want to return back to is commencement. Commencement with respect to students who are eligible should still apply for graduation so the process can be completed for getting your degree. As I said, a decision about the commencement event has not yet been finalized. I have a question that says, "Does the room and board include the meal plan to get refunded?" The information that I have right now essentially indicates that there will be credits and refunds developed for students that are leaving the residence halls based on the remaining portion of the semester. So it says, "In our tuition and mandatory fees bill, there is a mandatory charge for intercollegiate athletic fee of $232. Will we get a refund for that?" This is one of the items that's under discussion right now through SUNY and Albany that we're having with our campus. At this point in time, I do not have guidance as to with respect to how that fee will be handled. How will student employment on campus be affected? And that goes back to an earlier question. If you're a student employee, whether you're a work-study or working in a non-work-study position, those positions have all been deemed nonessential by the governor of New York. Consequently, it's best if you contact your supervisor as soon as you can with respect to finding out what's the plan for you to either continue working or to do something different. The next question is, "How will advising for next semester go?" I'm going to back up and talk about this semester. At this point in time, advising will move to a virtual modality. So you'll be able to speak to advisors or to a faculty advisor using an online virtual mechanism, just like we're doing here today. "Will international students be able to stay in college housing?" Absolutely. International students who have the inability to return home or are not able to travel back to their home countries because of restrictions on incoming individuals, absolutely, international students may stay in our residence halls. The next question is, "Will independent studies be able to run?" Because of the nature of independent studies, and I'll give an example. If you're doing a research project in a biology laboratory with a faculty member, if you happen to be in the region or in the area, because of the fact that it would only be a one or two-person involvement in a large space, those kinds of activities could continue. However, large groups will not be coming together in terms of the... If it's an independent study that involves large groups of people to attend or to be present. "As a student worker, can I file for unemployment?" I'm going to put that one into the human resources and financial aid basket to see what response will come back for that. Thanks for asking it. Question is, "Do you have any guidelines for students living in off-campus apartments?" I believe that my guidelines to yourself and to anyone else who lives in our community is to practice good, basically, good activities to prevent the spread of the virus. That means social distancing or physical distancing, keeping your interactions with other individuals in the community to a minimum, practicing the proper hygiene strategies that have been explored, and essentially, as some communities are saying, just stay in place. The next question was, "What will students who have on-campus jobs do?" And the short answer to that is, contact your supervisor and determine what's been decided with respect to the job, given the nonessential declaration by the governor. And I want to go back to the question about academic advising, since it's coming up in multiple questions. Academic advising will be completed through a variety of modalities. And there is a webpage with more details that's already been set up. The link is on the main 24/7 coronavirus resource page on the main SUNY Plattsburgh website. And so there's been a series of questions concerning left items in the rooms and when they could be picked up. And I'm going to say, just to clump those together, the best advice I can provide you right now is to wait for a communication from Residence Life as to when you would have access or how you can access those. And if it's not possible for you to come get them right now, what would be the way in which you could make accommodations or how accommodations could be made to do that? The question I'll go back to, that I've just received some guidance on, is unemployment insurance for student employees. And what I've been told is that the determination for unemployment by student employees is made by the State Department of Labor. And so as a university, we are awaiting guidance from the state about this, but the campus does not make that decision. The question that just came in, "Is there a rough ballpark how much a refund will be, assuming you leave within a week or two from now?" It says, "Some students rely on refunds to travel home." And I think that's a great question, and it points to the fact that we have not a lot of certainty in this aspect right now. At this point in time, all I can tell you is that the refunds for the credits that are being calculated are based on the unused portion of the residence and dining hall plans. And I don't have any more from that. The word that I've heard is prorated, but again, we'll have to wait for guidance from the system. This question is a long one, I'm going to read it, but it's important. It said, "There are so many variables that affect the student grade from this moment onwards. The teacher's inability to shift their classes effectively online, student stressors of being at home, student responsibilities of taking care of siblings as public schools are now closed, and student's inability to find a healthy environment to work as libraries are closed and the shift to the grab-and-go model, as well as differing student individual learning types." So the question that, the heart of this, is, "Will a bell curve be implemented to adhere to the sudden shift in learning? And how and where can we report professors who are being unfair with the grading system?" So the short answer to your question is that I've already had a conversation with the faculty about the stressors that have just been described in this message. I've indicated to the faculty that this is the time to be flexible, this is the time to be creative, and this is the time to ensure that students are successful in the classes. Professors have wide latitude with respect to how to provide the information and curriculum to you so you stay on track to complete the course, but more importantly, stay on course to graduate. The reporting system in terms of a grading system, we would follow the same protocols that we have on our campus right now with respect to issues about grading and grade appeals. And so if you have questions about that, you can contact your department or the dean's office in your respective school. It says, "If the graduation ceremony is postponed, will it be changed to the fall graduation?" Well, there's a great idea. I think that's an innovative way to be able to provide the graduation experience in person for all of our students who are planning to graduate this spring. So I appreciate that question. I think that's the first time that we've sort of, that idea sort of popped up. So thanks so much for that. It's expected that student teaching programs in the public schools... Sorry, I'll read this properly. "It is expected that the student teaching programs in the schools will resume or are they canceled for the term?" There is guidance being developed right now due to the fact that our local schools here in Plattsburgh just canceled all face-to-face instruction. I do know that there is work going on in the school with respect to the education students to think about alternate ways to complete the requirements for the credentialing piece of the work that our student teachers are involved with. There's a question that says, "My daughter has not completely moved out of her room, but does not intend to return. Can she check out now and return at a later date? And is there a housing refund, and what date will that be based on?" So I'll just go to the very end of that question. It's my understanding that the refunds and credits that are going to be issued will essentially date to the start of the spring break. So I don't worry about whether you make the decision today or tomorrow to do that. I don't have guidance yet from Residential Life as to how and when you can access the room, but as soon as that's available, and hopefully it will happen before our hour is up, I will share that with this group. "I rented textbooks from the college store, and I'm not going to come back to Plattsburgh. What should I do?" Great question for our campus auxiliary services as they run the textbook component for our campus. So I'm going to place that one into the CAS bucket and hope that they can give a response back to what we do with rentals. It says, "How will students moving on campus be refunded?" And I want to be clear that the terminology that we're using is credited or refunded. And I don't have the details right now as to when those credits or refunds will show up, but I can assure you that we'll have guidance to you in a matter of... if not by the end of this week, early next week. Again, this is a fluid aspect of what we're dealing with at the very moment. "Will remaining home after spring break impact my financial aid in any way?" And I would say that that's an outstanding question that many students are probably asking at this time. My recommendation is to contact the student financial aid office, indicate to them your specific concerns and your conditions that you're worried about, and they will provide you an answer back. Next question. "When will temporary workers be able to resume work?" And I'm assuming we're talking about temporary student workers. And as I've mentioned already, temporary or student workers on this campus fall into the category of nonessential employees, and they're subject to the same guidelines that have been put forth by the governor of New York. And what that means is, you need to contact your supervisor to determine what next steps are taken with respect to your employment. "When will a graduations decision be made?" The point I'll go back to is that at this point, CDC recommends no gatherings of 50 or more for the next eight weeks. That puts us into the graduation date that we've scheduled right now for May. So I will tell you right now, we will not stretch this out for a long period of time, but the decision will not be made this week. "I have a 12-credit internship this semester through an administrative office at Plattsburgh. How will that impact my academics?" I would say, contact your academic advisor who's assisting with this particular internship and contact the individual that's working with you on the internship in the community. And that's probably the best step at this point in time to be able to address that question. It says, "Will there be any precautions taken for students when they come back after spring break?" I know a lot of people are saying they're coming back after spring break to collect their things after visiting high-risk areas. And so the precautions that we'll be taking, and this will stretch to communications that we'll provide to anyone who's coming back to our campus, is that be mindful of good hygiene techniques. Do not congregate or be in areas with large crowds. When you come to, if you come back to the campus, keep yourself a distance of six to three feet from other individuals. Those are the general recommendations that we're providing, not only to our students and to our campus community, but those are the recommendations that are being extended to everyone in the broader community here in the United States and around the world. The best solution right now is to stay in place and not move and circulate through the community. The question is, "How is this going to affect final exams?" The short answer to that is that the professor and instructor of your class will be providing the final grading instrument to you via the virtual modality that they choose. So you will have your final exam scheduled, basically, as a package with the online component of the course that you're now taking. It says, "Since the library hours are limited, what's going to happen to students who need access to the internet for classes?" Well, there's multiple locations around our campus where there are opportunities to access computers in the open outside of the library. I've asked the dean of the library and head of our chief information officer to generate a list of, I'll say, computer locations around our campus that will allow your student to continue to have access to the internet and be able to continue to do work towards the completion of their class. The next question, "When will refunds be known?" It's a decision as to whether to come back to campus or not at all based on the refunds. And I'll just reemphasize, refunds or credits are going to be based on the start of spring break. And the information that I've got so far, that I've already indicated in today's town hall, is that the final details have not been established, but there's a sense that these will be prorated from the date in which this occurs, like, for example, today or yesterday, and for the remainder of the semester. It says, "Will the psychological counseling still be held in the Health Center?" And I would say that the best answer for that right now is to get one of our counseling center staff to give me a quick answer back so I can provide that to the group. So I want to take a moment and just shift back to a couple of questions that have come in. One is about the teacher education, and we've gotten some guidance from our teacher education department. They're advising that due to changes in area schools that have been mandated, all the student teaching right now has been canceled for the rest of the semester. And again, to just go back to some of the questions that are arising, what concerns about issues of health and wellness of students. I know if you return to campus and you begin to exhibit any signs or symptoms, please contact the Student Health and Counseling Center or see your health provider. And so if you feel or you don't feel well, work with your health provider that way back in your home, but be proactive. And I would say, if you're not feeling well, don't travel back to campus. There's a question that says, "Will this affect students..." There's a question that says, will this affect students that are graduating in December as far as credits are needing? I'm going to interpret that question and indicate if you complete your credits this semester through the online modalities, for example, through Moodle, yes, these credits will count towards your progress towards graduation. Next question is, will the editing suites and other resources be available to students in Yocum? The, that answer is similar to what we talked about earlier about biology, students needing access to laboratory space, or students in the fine arts needing access to galleries or to, I should say that again, studio space. At this point in time, as we sit right now on March the 17th, it's my understanding that these types of spaces are still open with the restriction that they only have a small number of individuals present in the room that were able to practice social distancing to ensure that there's at least six feet between individuals that are in that space. The next question is, will the Cardinal Star Online Tutoring Center remain accessible? And this came up in the, in the faculty staff meeting, and the answer I've received is yes, the online tutoring is going to remain online. And I'm, I'm going to ensure that because things are fluid, that we, we still are able to indicate that answer as positive. I'm going to do this. My son was set to start an internship on the 23rd of March. Can this be done at all virtually? Would he just check with the company? He needs to graduate. Thanks very much for that question. And I think the, the innovation that's being expressed in many of your questions is that are there ways that we can do this and successfully provide students the opportunity to, to have internships, but also to complete their courses? I would say yes. Contact the company, contact the academic advisor, and just see what, what's being done virtually. The interesting aspect of this, as I lean into my camera here, is that every company, every organization is faced with the same challenges and questions that we are faced with right now. So clearly, this is an interesting learning experience, not just for your son, but also for other students here in our community. The question is, will we get the money back we had left on our dining dollars and express dollars? The, the question again goes back to the issue of credits and refunds, and I would say that there's going to be more information coming shortly with respect to how that will be processed. Says, hi, I'm a student on campus and wondering if you know when Memorial Gym will open back up? I would say that the gym is not going to reopen for at least four to six weeks, it may be longer, until we get past where the CDC is recommending that, that we do not have individuals congregating in a large area. The, the question is, will the health center provide masks and hand sanitizers as most of them are sold out in stores? The short answer to that question is, the health center does not provide masks. The masks that they possess are for their healthcare workers to be able to deal with individuals who are, are ill and expressing symptoms. So thanks for that question. Says, can we come to campus tonight or tomorrow to get the rest of our son's belongings? And I'm going to just click down here, I'm getting more answers here. Okay. The, the short answer for that one is, I will wait to get some guidance from our residence life individuals to determine how and when the residence halls can be accessed. So I would say, stay tuned in the next five or six minutes, I will get a response and I can, I can provide that back. I know there's a lot of logistical questions that are coming up, you know, when can you get access? Do you have to do it now? Can you wait? Those are all excellent questions, and we're endeavoring right now through our residential life to provide the answers to our students about this. It says, will housing office allow people to split into their, into their own rooms to properly quarantine themselves? Having a roommate doubles the risk of infection. So the, I'm going to interpret the question is that if you return to campus and your roommate has been tested positive for COVID-19, they will not be in the room with you. That's, 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 that's not going to be an occurrence. Is the question that if you come back and your roommate has come back from a different place, and you're concerned about them having been, basically having exposure to the virus, that's a residential life question as well in terms of the, the ability for you to find a, a room that doesn't have another roommate. So we'll wait for that. So I've gotten some answers with respect to internships. Again, for internships, again, if you've got questions about your internship, contact the dean's office in your respective school. For campus housing and community living, there's going to be a message tomorrow going out to everyone who's involved, who lives in the, in the residential halls about access and coming back to campus to be able to pick up your belongings. And the answer about Yocum right now, it says right now, there's made a decision to, the communication studios in Yocum, no communication studios in Yocum will be open or accessible to students beginning right now. So there, those studios are not going to be available. Next question. Will dining venues, specifically Clinton where students can sit down and eat, be open as normal after break because all places to eat only provide takeout now? Will dining dollars and meal plan rollover or refund? So it's our understanding that the dining halls will go to a takeout mode, so you will not be able to sit in the dining hall and have, have your meal. The, the rollover, the refund, the credits, that's something that's still being worked out right now, and you'll receive information shortly once we've received guidance from the SUNY office in Albany. It says, how do we find out if our class requires us to log on at a certain time or if we just have to check to get our work turned in on time and we don't have live lectures? How can we find out if we have live lectures or not? I think this is a good opportunity in the next few days for your instructors to reach out to you. I would, I would give them a few days to prepare a message that will come to you. Again, instruction does not begin until March the 23rd. Allow your instructor the chance to reach out to the entire class. It's more effective and efficient if there's a single message coming from your instructor. I know your instructor will let you know the time when the class will meet and then the expectations to complete the material for the end of the semester. So good question, and thanks for, for asking it. There's another question about graduation. Is there a possibility for a later graduation date in August? And the short answer to that is, we've already had that, that discussion here, and I think it's a, it's a wonderful idea, so let's, let's put that one into the, the good ideas category. So thanks. It says, will off-campus events such as science conferences be canceled and postponed? Nationally, every major organization or group or scientific society is canceling their conferences. Everything that we know that's happening that involves large groups of individuals, and now that number seems to be shrinking to a large number of 50, has been canceled. Is the campus now considered to be closing and all students must leave? No, the campus is not closed. The campus remains open. We have a large number of essential employees who are here that are keeping the campus running and operational. With respect to students leaving or coming back, as I mentioned at the top of the hour when we began this, the recommendation and the strong recommendation is if you're, to not return to campus. However, if you fall into some categories of students that I mentioned, if you're an international student, if you're a student that has, has challenges with respect to housing or doesn't have housing or have technology challenges, you are welcome to remain on campus. The, the next question is, how will the time difference be taken into consideration for exams and live classes? Also, what happens if the internet is down during the time of an exam? Answer the, the internet question being down, clearly if there's a technology glitch that occurs, there will be accommodations that will be made with respect to rescheduling or being able to provide you that, that opportunity to complete the project. The time difference, I'm, I'm assuming that perhaps you may live in a state that's either central or mountain. I would simply say that the, the time that class begins will be in Eastern Standard Time, so if it's a 9:00 AM class and you happen to be in California, it's now a 6:00 AM class. Gosh, I shouldn't have said that, but yeah, that's, that's a time difference that, that's, it's quite a number of hours. Will late fees be assessed on unpaid tuition bills? I'm going to let the, the financial aid office and, and deal with that question and provide me an answer back. Will the Student Association Campus Shuttle keep running through the semester? I do not have information about the Student Association Shuttle bus, so I will, I'll wait for that answer to pop up in my, my inbox here as well. So the next question, I want to take this one slow, and it's, it's a powerful question because I think it's a question on many of your minds, both students and parents. Says, my son isn't a good online learner. Will the teachers and professors be helping with students like him and teaching differently? I would expect that every instructor is 100% dedicated to the success of the students in the class. They will be shifting the way in which they're delivering the instruction, they will be paying high and strong attention to students' needs to be able to be successful in the class. Many of our classes will not be run in a traditional online modality. There will be opportunities for, just like we're doing here today, to zoom in, Skype in, do Google Hangouts, however, whatever the instructor chooses, but to take the temperature of the class to ensure that everyone is, is staying up with the material and is, is learning what's required to be successful in the class. And I've, I've indicated to the faculty that this is going to be an important consideration, and I want the students to know that this is something that's foremost on the faculty's minds. Our goal is to see you successful. We want you to be progressing towards your degree. We want you to get the courses this semester. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for us to come together as a community and provide the educational needs in a very different way. So I'm, I'm excited for the, for the next few months to see how we succeed as a community in, in addressing this challenge. Question is, how's academic advising going to be carried out? It's going to occur, occur in a virtual way, so whether you're with the advising center or with a faculty member, these, these advising sessions will be scheduled using video conferencing or virtual conferencing like we're doing here in this meeting today. Will student employees for campus dining still have jobs? And if you're a student dining employee, I would say, send an email message to your supervisor right now to determine what you should do with respect to your position. Could graduation on May 16th still be a possibility? I'll just repeat the CDC guidelines. We are encouraged not to hold any event of more than 50 people over the next eight weeks, and that corresponds to our graduation. However, there has been some good ideas to be able to bundle the May graduation with the December graduation. So I think that there are alternates that we should be thinking about, and I'll be thinking about as well. The question has come in with respect to, actually coming back on student bills for tuition. The, the answer is that you should be working towards payments as scheduled, but there is an evaluation on loosening the application of late fees for this right now. The question has come up about the photography studio, so I'm putting that into our, our virtual parking lot for a moment to get some feedback. It says, what would the situation for housing look like if there's students required to quarantine within their rooms? And how many individuals can be quarantined on campus if required? Also, what about the others who are not exposed to the virus and living in the same building or floor as someone with COVID-19? And what I would respond to is that there are strict guidelines involving isolation and quarantine. And so any, any aspect that would involve quarantining or providing isolation to students on campus would need to meet with health guidelines, with the CDC guidelines, and I would rely on the Health Center and our experts in that to provide some further guidance on that. But I, again, we will follow the guidelines that the Health Department and the CDC would propose for isolation and for, and for quarantine. I was told that I can pick up my daughter's stuff tomorrow. Is that still true? We're working up guidance right now with respect to when there will be access to the residence halls. This will be a message coming out short, shortly from the residential life part of the university to all residential students. Okay. I said, are there any known cases of the COVID-19 on campus or in the surrounding area? At the very top of the hour, I indicated that there's been one confirmed case in the community. This is an individual who has no connection to the university, is not an employee, is not a staff member or a student. So it says, for students who never paid anything, does anything get credit to them for next semester? That's an interesting question. I would say that's a, that's going to be a financial aid question. I'm assuming this may have come through scholarships or some sort of ways in which you were, your, your expenses or fees were covered by an external person rather than yourself. So I would say, ask that question of financial aid. It says, if the problem persists and international students can't re-enter the country to attend college in the fall of 2020, will the college remain in session? Or will it be postponed for the next semester? Assuming international students can't return, but the college remains in sessions, do the international students just skip a semester? I don't have a clear answer for this question right now. I'm working under the assumption that we will be back in session in the fall of 2020. I know that international students or students who are coming to our campus from an international location are going to be subject to the, essentially the travel restrictions that their countries have or that the, perhaps the United States may place on, on, on international countries. So if you're an international student and you're, and you're not able to come back, I would say that through our academic advising and through conversations with your program faculty, finding a way to get you back on track to graduate at a, at a future semester. So it says, if we leave the country now and plan to come back after summer break, but what if the borders are closed and we are not able to return for the next semester? I think that question is very similar to the, the question I just answered a moment ago. I would simply say that communicate with your program, talk to your advisor, and determine and develop a plan to be able to stay on track for completing your program here at Humboldt, sorry, at SUNY Plattsburgh. It says, I have a $3,000 bill due March 20th. Should I pay it? The, that question you should address to financial aid. If it's a tuition bill, you should plan on paying it as scheduled. I have an update on the photo studios. It says that the photo studios, along with most of the art studios, are set to remain open to students working on special projects. Students should regularly check with their instructors to see about this because this is an evolving situation. So again, photo studios, photo studios and the art studios are going to remain open. Question, is there a way to get tested for COVID-19 here on campus? And the answer is no. All COVID-19 testing only occurs in response to a doctor's prescription, and the campus at the moment does not have a mechanism to provide those tests. Will the next semester begin in August as usual? It's my sincere hope that we continue to be able to open in August and, and resume the face-to-face classes that, that we would have here on the campus. So it says, is Memorial Gym closed for the remainder of the semester? The answer right now is, it's closed for at least the next four to six weeks. It says, I have another question is, will I get a refund for unused food on my meal plan account? And as I've indicated at the beginning and several times during this town hall, there's a, basically a plan being developed to, to provide credit or refund for unused portions of the meal plan based on the remaining days in the semester. Will there be a summer 2020 session? And the initial response that I've heard to that is not likely, but I'm going to ask to see if there's been a, a more definitive answer, so I put that into the academic affairs box here to see if there will be any, any more guidance with respect to the, the summer 2020. I've a, I've got a response back concerning international students and international travel, and it says, depending on State Department and Department of Homeland Security guidelines, international students should be allowed back to the United States in the fall. GEO will help them. International students who cannot return physically in August can be accommodated through online courses offered. So there are mechanisms already So there are mechanisms already in place to assist our international students to stay on track to complete their degrees. It says, "Is there a date for moving out of my dormitory?" And I would say that the guidance and email you'll receive tomorrow from Residential Life will explain precisely the protocol and procedures for you to indicate that you're not returning to campus for the remainder of the semester. So watch for that. "If our roommate left campus and is not coming back, will the student who chooses to stay on campus incur additional costs for housing?" I'm going to interpret that perhaps you're living in a double room, and now you would be living in a single room, and would there be an additional cost for that? I'm going to say, you know, without even going to the guidance box on the side, you should not incur any additional expense because your roommate doesn't come back. So I hope that helps. All right. Question is, "How will we find out if we have live lectures or not?" There will not be live lectures. All instruction, beginning next Monday, moves to a online or a distance learning mode. So you will receive information from your instructor as to how to access the course materials. You'll receive instructions if there's actually going to be what we call synchronous or in real-time conversations, how you will connect and be part of a virtual class to discuss and actually receive information about the course materials. So it says, "Do you recommend staying in Plattsburgh or going back home if we can?" My recommendation is that if you are able to return to your home community, that you do so. If you're an international student, a student who does not have housing or has challenges with respect to technology or not being able to access internet, then you should stay. But my recommendation is that you stay at your home location. Okay. The next question is, "My student qualifies for Excelsior, so do I pay my remaining two bills since they are for room and board?" And that's a really outstanding question because I know many of our students here are Excelsior students. What I've been informed by the SUNY office in Albany is that there is guidance being prepared from the state of New York with respect to Excelsior scholarships and how that will be handled. And so the short answer to that is, stay tuned for the Excelsior. With respect to the room and board bills, and I know that the, it sounds counterintuitive to say you should pay them, so I'm not going to say that, but I would say is check with the Financial Aid Office for guidance on whether any portion of those bills should be paid, given the place where we are right now with respect to the idea of credits or refunds. A question that we have now is with respect to, an answer with respect to international students as well and for other students. Right now, we're working on a program for students who live off-campus and have meal plans, and so we'll be connecting with all meal plan holders soon. So if you're a meal plan holder here at SUNY Plattsburgh, you will receive a message from our dining facilities or our dining meal plan individuals very shortly. Another question about, it's, "As a follow-up for work-study, I've spoken to my supervisor and she indicated that facilities will be closed for the rest of the semester. So there's no chance that work-study students can get the balance of their work-study..." So there's no chance that work-study students can get the balance of their work-study payment back? It says, "A lot of students do rely on that money." And I understand completely the concern about the, certainly the financial distress that this will cause. Given that financial aid and work-study connect, you will receive guidance from our Financial Aid Office with respect to what happens with the remaining amount of work-study that you have available to you. It says, next question, "Is it possible to get a refund for meal plans while staying on campus?" I'm going to let the residential life and the individuals that manage the meal plans provide you an answer. There should be a message coming out tomorrow with respect to that. The question is, "If we go under quarantine, will the dorms be shut down?" The, that's a, that's a question that goes back to something I mentioned earlier. Anytime we would ever do isolation or quarantine would be done under the strict guidance and guidelines of the local Health Department and the Centers for Disease Control. We are not going to be, I'll say, shutting down the dorms if there happens to be a quarantine in the community. Our dorms or residential spaces are left open. So I'm hopeful that I'm catching the essence of that question. Let's see. What would, it says, "What would happen to students taking art classes that mandate them to be in the classroom like most art classes?" And as I've already mentioned, that there are still some studio spaces that are available and are open. And I would say check with the department or the faculty that's been overseeing your studio work and determine if that space is still going to remain open. It says, "Will we receive our graduation diploma by mail if you graduate in May?" And the short answer to that is, if we're unable to complete the graduation ceremony in real-time at the field house, yes, you will receive your diploma through the mail. Let's see. It says, "Will all the students this semester be able to get credits needed? Some grants require," and this is bouncing around in me, "the amount of credits," and it got truncated there, so I'm not going to be able to answer the full question. The short answer for that one is, if you are a student and you're enrolled and you're continuing your education on March 23rd in the online distance learning, you will be able to complete the courses for credit this semester. And your faculty are working with you to achieve that goal. And some of the earlier questions were around being able to provide accommodations and flexibility. And an earlier question this afternoon was about, "How do we best work with students who are challenged with respect to working in an online environment?" And as I've stressed, our faculty are fully aware of this, and they are willing to provide support to our students to ensure that they're successful in these courses. So again, you will have the opportunity to complete the semester, earn the credits that you signed up for, stay on track for graduation, and certainly be prepared for the next semester here at SUNY Plattsburgh. The question is, "Do you know when student teachers can expect to hear about New York State certification?" That's a question that we'll put into the School of Education hopper for consideration. That will require some direct communication from the Education Department to our teachers who are involved with certification. And I've just been reminded that we have two minutes to go, and I know I have not come close to answering all your questions, but I will do the last couple of questions here. It says, "If we are in the region, can we go to academic advising in person?" And given the, again, the CDC guidelines and the local Health Department guidelines, I'm going to discourage face-to-face, in-person meetings as much as possible. You will be able to coordinate with your advisor either through the Academic Advising Center or your faculty advisor through a, essentially a virtual meeting, again, through a Google Hangout, through a, for example, a Zoom meeting. That's far better than avoiding the important concept of social distancing. And as I said a long time ago, when we first got together, how do we flatten the curve with respect to the number of cases that will occur in the community? And the last question I will take is, "How will the grading system for the Semester B? Still A to F or pass/fail?" And what I'm going to do is put that into the Academic Affairs and the Dean's inbox for a response back to the students with respect to how the grading is going to occur, so there's no confusion to that. So I have approximately one minute to say a few more, I'll say, words of encouragement to everybody. I want to thank you for your participation. I want to thank you for your understanding and also the fact that this is a dynamic and a stressful time for each of us. I want you to know that we're going to get through this. And I encourage you to take time for yourself as you need to. And I also just personally want to thank you for being our student. And I know that it may feel that we're in a very uncertain time right now, but I want you to know that from the president to the rest of the community here at SUNY Plattsburgh, we're here for one purpose, and that's to assure your success as students. And as one individual put it to me many, many weeks ago, "Our goal here is to make student dreams come true." And so I'm pleased to be part of that opportunity, and I thank you for, again, for being our students. Have a great afternoon.